We'll call the meeting to order of the City Council of the City of Atwater on October 14th, 2013 at 6:06. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Jeff Rivera. Please remain standing for the invocation. Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your loving kindness and your watch care overs. We're so thankful we have you in our presence every day of our life. We left up those tonight, Father, that have made decisions for our city. Fathers, sometimes they're not very easy, sometimes they're hard, but may each thing that comes before this board, may they do it the best of their ability, and I know they will. And, Father, be with our law enforcement officers and our fire department and all those that are out here each day protecting our freedom. We're so grateful for them. We pray, Father, that as this day does come to an end, that everyone will say, "I've done the very best I can for my city." I ask, Father, for traveling mercies for all of us as we return to our loved ones. For it's Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. I'd like to welcome everyone to our City Council meeting. Roll call.
Bergman.
Here.
Mooneyham.
Here.
Jeff Rivera.
Here.
Joe Rivera.
Absent.
Paul? We have a quorum.
Approval of the agenda as posted or amended. I'll entertain a motion from council members or from the city staff if they wish to pull an agenda item or change the order of the agenda. Anyone who wishes to do anything -- okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Jeff Rivera.
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Bergman. Councilman Bergman. Any discussion? Call for the question.
Mooneyham?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Jeff Rivera?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is the mayor or city attorneys' report out from closed session. No reportable action was taken. Staff was given direction and the closed session agenda was completed. Next item on the agenda is ceremonial matters. And Dorothy Buckingham, one of our wonderful citizens, she celebrated her 100th and 4th, 104th birthday on September 26th. And you know, that is a wonderful, wonderful accomplishment. But we were going to honor Dorothy tonight, but unfortunately, she couldn't attend, so we are having her in our praise and our thoughts and everything, and we'll send her a certificate. So we -- but thought and congratulations to Dorothy Buckingham. Presentations. Number one, Tuolumne River Regional Park PowerPoint presentation. I would like my friends from the Hispanic Youth Leadership to please take the podium. This is Fernando Almaraz. And Fernando, would you introduce your group and introduce who you are?
Good afternoon. My name is Fernando Almaraz, and here with me is Mr. Duran. He's a club supporter and a teacher at Baja Colony High School. Ms. Arano, she is the co -- I'm sorry. The co-advisor of Hila, as well as a teacher at Baja Colony. And here are my fellow schoolmates as well, Meyer Hernandez. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. And Zoe.
Okay, relax, Fernando.
Relax. Take a breath. This young man had a wonderful summer last year. He conducted the CVOC Migrant Summer School Career Education Day, and so he is an outstanding -- and he also spent a week in Washington, DC. So Fernando, it's yours.
Thank you very much. Well, good afternoon. Like I said, my name is Fernando Almaraz. I'm sorry for Ms. Mendoza, she wasn't able to attend. She is in a meeting in Texas related to school. Well, today, I'm here to present about the Tuolumne River Regional Park. This is a map that shows the location of the Tuolumne River Regional Park. The park is composed of 500 acres over seven miles of river in length, as well as barking six district areas and currently developing the Gateway Parcel. This is an area in which Hila members were able to be involved in the park cleanup hosted by HLC, and this is known as the Gateway Parcel. And next to present is Meyer Hernandez.
Hi, my name is Meyer Hernandez. I am the secretary of Hila. Here we have a picture of the landscape of the Gateway Parcel. The Gateway Parcel is approximately 87 acres, located between Dry Creek and Highway 99. It provides direct access to the Tuolumne River. It is restoring the riparian habitat along the river corridor, which is creating stormwater purification wetlands to treat the runoff from 7th and 8th and 9th Street. The Gateway Parcel is a great place to take a family and just be active. It gives the people, pedestrians and bicycle access from east to the west. Next up to present is Dogg and Doggies. So, the Gateway Parcel, there was also a trail on the Gateway Parcel, which is used for any pedestrians that would like to do activities, exercise, anything like that. Also, the Gateway Parcel also has vista points to look out, you know, and enjoy the environment and just to enjoy nature. The Gateway Parcel is -- also encourages to keep the area clean, the wetlands still open for the environment, all the habitats and things like that. And also, the parcel has wetlands that help purify the water before it goes into the river, so that way it doesn't damage any animals, habitats, and things like that. And up next is Callie Garcia.
Hi, I'm Callie Garcia. I'm co-advisor fundraising for Hila. In the park, there will be helpful signs that will describe significant areas. There are some of the things we do there is we use weed whackers to clean the weeds around the unpaved roads. We paint graffiti. Some of the things I did was pick up trash. They feed us food. It's pretty fun. There is hiking all around the pathways. We participate in a photography contest. It's shown in Modesto. It's shared with the communities, and it's pictures of the river park cleanup. I would just like to thank Ms. Arano and Mr. Duran for being here, and thank you for your time.
One of the programs that these young people had to do was to make a presentation of this project to a city council or a governmental body. And so that's -- and so Mr. Fernando called me and said, "Ms. Paul, can we make this presentation in front of the Atwater City Council?" And I said, "Fernando, we'd be more than happy to have you come." And I just -- do we have any questions at the council? Okay. I just want to thank you all. Oops, pardon me. Mr. Councilman Bergman, my apologies.
Oh, thank you. Now, I was just curious, how much time did you spend up in the park working? It looks like through the pictures, you did quite a bit, and I just personally, I'd like to thank you. I love to see youth organizations such as this put time in cleaning up our environment and making an area such as this more friendly for the citizens to enjoy. But I was curious, how much time did you spend up there?
We got there at around 8:00, and we came home at about 1:30 or 2:00.
You got a good day's work in, huh? Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we just want to compliment you and commend you, and we want to compliment your advisors, Mr. Duran, and I -- you're going to have to remind me your name, but we want to thank you very, very much. And I think Fernando's mother is in the back, and job well done. I thought I am Fernando's mother number two, so I just want you to know, yes. So anyway, on behalf of the City of Atwater and the City Council, job well done. Thank you very much for coming and presenting your program to us. Thank you. You may leave because I know you have other things to do, or you may stay. And our next presentation is, and thank you very, very much. Okay, thank you. Do we have the representative from the PG&E verbal status relating to the undergrounding utility project? Great, come on up, please. This is Richard Dye, Governmental Affairs for PG&E.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Just here to provide a quick update on the Atwater Bellevue Phase 1 Rule 28 undergrounding project. As many of you know, I've been here several times to brief the council on the project and the progress that we're making. Currently, the project is progressing nicely. We're looking to complete the PG&E portion of the work by the beginning of November with the final paving for the project by the end of November. We're closely working with city staff as we continue to progress throughout the project, as I mentioned in a previous council meeting. The way the project has continued to go, you know, we continue to reach out to residents and businesses that are impacted by the project. Now, we're in that phase of reaching out to businesses and residents with planned outages as we work to underground the lines and put them in a conduit, run them through the trench that we've laid. Just as a -- for your information, AT&amp;T hasn't begun their portion of work on the project, which at this point means that they will be the final utility on the pole, meaning that once their work is complete, then they will be responsible for removing the poles that are out there in the street or on the sidewalk currently. And so you won't see those poles removed until their facilities are taken off of the pole. So that's the update currently. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Councilman Bergman, followed by Councilman Jeff Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. So now, is the conduit in place for the phone lines to be run, or are they going to have to dig the road up again?
You know, we've been laying conduit right now for the power lines to, you know, be put in the ground. Then we'll be running those lines through the conduit. So some of the work that they're doing, you know, there's temporary paving in some areas. You know, we're working to finalize some of the other underground infrastructure that's being put in place, but we're nearing, you know, as you can tell, it's, you know, we're only a couple of weeks away from the end of the month here, that we'll complete our portion of that work.
Okay. So the conduit is already laid for the phone lines as well?
For the power lines.
Where are the phone lines going?
Yeah, it's a shared trench. So you have power lines, you have phone lines, you have other cable or other facilities that are in the trench as well.
That was my question. Okay. So then, the temporary asphalt, you're going to go back and?
So we're, yeah, we're going to -- my understanding, you know, based on the level of construction progress that we made at this point, we will finish the PG&E portion of the work, and I continue to emphasize the PG&E portion of the project, being that there are other utilities involved in this joint venture in undergrounding our facilities. So other utilities have a responsibility for their portion of it. But what we will be completing here at the end of, the beginning of November, is the PG&E portion of the work and then paving at the end of November over those trenches.
Any question? Oh, Mr. Jeff Rivera, my apologies.
Yes, I was going to ask about the agreement with AT&amp;T to finish so that the poles are removed. What is the agreement with AT&amp;T?
That's between the city and AT&amp;T.
Okay, so PG&E has?
I can't answer on behalf of AT&amp;T.
All right. And then, what is the timeline for you to be totally finished?
For us to be totally finished, as I mentioned, our work to be done by the beginning of November, and the final paving by the end of November. But at the same time, as I mentioned, AT&amp;T will be responsible for the removal of their facilities from the poles, and then they themselves will be responsible for removing the poles. So once that work is done.
Can I ask you a -- go ahead, I'm sorry.
You're good.
May I ask you then, what about Comcast's lines on the poles?
Comcast?
Comcast? Mm-hmm.
They're signs, you said?
No, they're lines on the poles.
They're lines. Yeah, they're working in Scott -- they've been working on the joint trench as well, right? So they're currently partnering, AT&amp;T is the last utility, so. Whoever the last person on the pole is the responsible party. And as I mentioned previously in council meetings, the pole will be completely removed where that's the only facility, it's, you know, Comcast, AT&amp;T, or PG&E on those poles. However, if there are light fixtures, you know, streetlights attached to those poles, they will be topped above the pole, above the light fixture, and the pole will remain in place. So that's the responsibility of the city. If in, you know, some previous discussion that we've had, the city would be responsible in the future if you wanted to, you know, take the pole out and put in, you know, a solid sole standard light fixture, streetlight. But as it currently stands, the pole will remain in place topped above the light fixture itself and then remain there.
Councilman Jeff Rivera?
I was going to ask two questions. One, do you mind leaving us a card in case the council has a question? And the other question would be to Scott McBride. What is the agreement with AT&amp;T, and what is the timeline, Luke, for the poles to be taken out?
I don't have the information for you. I'll have to get back with you on that. I do know that we've been working really closely with PG&E, and they've offered, if we're having issues, to approach the CPUC if it's not resolved to our satisfaction. So I'll have to check in on it and get you an update. Obviously, the city engineer's been more involved than I have been, but we can look into it for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Mooneyham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The question directed at the city manager, I think the real problem is that we don't have the money to actually erect the permanent poles yet for the lights. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
May I ask another question is, why are you paving in the end of November, and then AT&amp;T is going to be paving again? Why, is there someone who's going to do a final paving to cover the whole, your trenches, their trenches, so that we have it all paved?
So, Mayor, it's a joint trench, so everyone's in the same trench, so the facility's already there, so there's a conduit, and then you'd run the wire through the trench underground.
So we only have one trench then?
Right.
So then, when you pave it on the end of November, that should be it?
Yes, as far as my understanding.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any other questions, Mr. Dyer? I appreciate him coming. This has been quite an interesting experience. I just want to commend your people who are doing the construction. They are -- we can move around. I thought it was going to be the biggest mess, but they've been able to move the traffic around quite well and still be able to get their work done. And so probably other people have other opinions on it, but in my opinion, I think they're doing very well. And so I just wanted you to compliment them.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So then, we're ready to move on to the third presentation. That is the Merced Integrated Regional Water Management Plan. And that will be Mr. Charles Gardner from Gardner &amp; Associates. And that will be -- Mr. Gardner, would you introduce the young man from the City of Merced?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Again, my name is Charles Gardner. I am a member of the consulting team that helped the region develop the Merced Integrated Regional Water Management Plan. With me is Mike Wegley, who is the Director of Water Resources for the City of Merced, one of the three entities that led the regional effort, the City of Merced, the County of Merced, and the Merced Irrigation District. I'm going to run through a short presentation. Seems to have a yellow tint to it tonight. I'm going to run through it very quickly, just to give you an opportunity to ask some questions, but I'll try to hit the highlights that I think are important for the City of The important thing is that the plan has been completed, and we are seeking adoption of the plan, not just by the three entities that created it, but by all of the governing entities in the region. And I'll talk some more about the governance towards the end of the presentation. So I'm going to give you just a quick overview of what this means, the Integrated Regional Water Management Program. Talk a little bit about the history here in the Merced region, what's been accomplished in developing the plan, and then talk about the next steps. Integrated Regional Water Management Planning is a process initiated by the State of California to improve how water is managed across the state. And the integrated part is to try to bring together water supply, groundwater management, wastewater management, flood management, surface water management, stormwater management, into a more comprehensive integrated approach, so we can be more efficient and effective with how we manage our water resources. A key element of it is that there is substantial state funding available to provide incentives and support projects that are implemented in an integrated way. $50 million through Proposition 50, $1 billion through Proposition 84, and $300 million through Proposition 1E. Currently, there are 49 approved regions in the state, and the Merced region is one of the approved regions. And to be approved, there has to be a regional water management group that has statutory authority over water management. They have to go through a regional acceptance process to be approved by the Department of Water Resources, and then prepare a plan consistent with the state standards. And this region has now been through all three of those steps. Some of the history here in the region, going from the bottom to the top, there's been quite a bit of work starting in about 1995 to work on groundwater management issues through some state laws that govern groundwater management, and also some municipal water supply planning with the City of Merced. The IRWM program was initiated in 2005, and as I mentioned, we've been through the regional acceptance process. The region pursued a grant to develop the plan and was successful in that, and now the plan is complete. And the region submitted a grant application, which has also been successful, to fund implementation of some of the projects in the plan. The steps that we've gone through to develop the plan, there are a number of elements of the guidance that direct these steps, but describing the region from a water management standpoint, defining goals and objectives and performance measures for regional water management, identifying projects, calling for projects from the region, and putting those projects through a review and prioritization process, identifying the impacts and benefits of projects, and then establishing information management, performance management approaches, and then considering the financing of projects. In parallel with that, there are discussions, we've had discussions about the governance, the future governance of water management in the region, and public and stakeholder outreach, and I'll touch more on that in a minute. All of those things have led into the IRWM plan. So in terms of the outreach program, we, the three entities, the Regional Water Management Group, established a regional advisory committee. It included 38 members. We've met monthly for about 14 months. I actually was the facilitator of that group to try to bring together the interests, represent the region into some common understanding and plans for the region. We also had extensive public outreach. We had three rounds of public meetings, and then we had a set of three public review meetings in June. We also did extensive outreach to particular disadvantaged communities in the region to identify their specific water management challenges and needs and get those incorporated into the plan. These are the elements of the plan. I won't go into a lot of detail. I've touched on sort of the -- a key one is the regional needs and objectives. Some technical studies were completed. Public outreach is an important element, and I'm going to talk about governance in a little bit. Just a quick list of the technical studies that were done as part of the plan, looking at the potential effects of climate change, looking at the needs around integrated flood management, water conservation across the region, salt and nutrient management, and groundwater recharge. I mentioned the goals and objectives. Those are an important part of establishing the future direction for the region integrating. The advisory committee identified 12 goals and objectives, 12 objectives, and I'll highlight the first three, which they identified as the most important. They're all important, but the three most important to the group were managing flows for public safety, water supply recharge, sorry, managing flood flows for public safety, water supply recharge, and natural resource management, meeting demands for all uses, including agriculture, urban, and environmental resource needs, and correcting the groundwater overdraft conditions that occur in the region. We've also developed a number of the long-term tools to manage the program going forward. The project website is available to everybody. It describes the process, and it lists all of the projects. It's mercedirwmp.org. There is also a project management tool built into the website to manage projects as they are now and as they are added in the future. And there's also a data management function to manage important water management data, including groundwater management, groundwater quality. I mentioned that we managed, we had projects identified. We did a public solicitation for water projects, and 75 projects were submitted by 17 different sponsors. There is one project for the City of Atwater, the stormwater management project. This is a rough representation of where those projects exist. And those projects went through a prioritization process. Screened first to be sure that each project submitted met at least one objective of the regional plan, and then a process of scoring and ranking projects to list them in really two categories. The tier-one projects are the top 50% based on score, and the tier-two projects are the other 50%. You can see from this graph that all of the objectives were met by at least one project. This depicts the number of objectives, number of projects that achieve each objective as a primary or secondary objective of the project. So we had a very, a large number of projects submitted and good correlation with the objectives for the region. Sorry I put this map so late, but this is a representation of the region, so it is the eastern part of Merced County, east of the San Joaquin River, and bounded by generally the Merced River and the Dry Creek watershed and the Chowchilla River on the south side. So the other important point on this slide is that I mentioned that the region submitted a grant, an implementation grant. So they wanted a grant to complete the plan, and then also submitted a grant for implementing projects within the plan. That grant was successful. We just heard a couple of weeks ago, the state is awarding, it was a $3.2 million grant application, they're awarding $2.4 million to the region to implement several of the projects that are in the plan. So already, this is, the planning effort is generating value for the region. I want to take a moment to talk about the governance structure, because I think this is an important area where the City of Atwater can play a role in the future. This organization chart really is sort of upside down from most normal organization chart, because the regional advisory committee was so important in driving the contents of the plan. But you'll see at the top, the regional advisory committee and work groups anticipated in the future to continue to coordinate efforts. But the management committee, the policy committee, and the governing entities But the management committee, the policy committee, and the governing entities are an important revision that we see here, provided that each of the entities agree. I mentioned that currently, the three entities, the Merced Irrigation District, the Merced County, and the City of Merced are the governing entities. The future governance anticipates the City of Atwater and the City of Livingston joining as a governing entity, provided that you agree to do that. And the intent there is to get the substantial land and water management entities working together on long-term water supply planning for the region. The policy committee would be one representative from each of those governing entities, and really would be setting the overall future policy direction for the regional plan. And then the management committee is the day-to-day management, which would include people like Mike, who are day-to-day managing water resources issues for each of these entities. I should highlight here that nothing in this plan changes the land use or water management responsibilities of any of the entities in the region. The idea is that it's a coordinating effort to look for opportunities where joint projects can provide more benefit. So your existing land use authority, existing water management responsibilities are not enhanced or obstructed in any way by this. It is really an intent to get entities working closely together to find multiple benefit We are in the process of approval of the plan or adoption of the plan. I mentioned it was completed in August after a little more than a year's worth of work and extensive public involvement. We're in the process now where entities throughout the region are adopting the plan, and we are asking that you adopt the plan. And then I think the step further for you would be to enter into discussion with those other entities about the governance structure, and how that would proceed, and whether you want to be part of that. But the first step would be to adopt the plan and support the region in moving forward in this regional effort. So without all, stop for questions?
Thank you very much. Is there any questions of Mr. Gardner in regards to this plan? Gentlemen?
Too fast.
Mr. Gardner, good job. City Attorney, are you... What's the next procedure that we were going to follow since we don't have any questions of our... From the city council at this presentation?
Yeah, you would just accept the presentation, and then at a subsequent meeting, probably the meeting either at the end of October or the beginning meeting of November, we would be asking you to adopt a resolution approving the plan. So that would be the next step.
Okay.
And that can come back at a subsequent meeting. I'll coordinate with Mr. Gardner on that.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Any still... Any questions of the Mr. Gardner, this plan? Mr. Gardner? Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for doing the presentation on such a last-minute thing, but we got it together, and we thank you very much. And Atwater was at the table and submitting things, but it was just a little bit of a communication problem, but we got it all back together again. So thank you again. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Comments from the public? Okay, thank you. Comments from the public. Notice to the public, at this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. Please state your name and address for the record. Action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. To comment on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for that item to be read for consideration. Then please go and stand behind Mr... Oh, come on. Price, thank you. And then I know that you wish to comment, but when you sit down, then I'm not quite sure. But I know Mr. Wallace wishes to comment on the public, so he will do that. So Mr. Price, you have three minutes, and please begin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Council members, ladies and gentlemen, Jim Price, 3467 Village Woods. Not accustomed to usually commenting on rumors, but there's a hot one here rolling around in the city that the city may be entertaining a hotel to come to the city. This is about the best news I've heard in a very long time. As anyone that is familiar with hotels and cities knows, the transient occupancy tax that is accumulated from the tenants that come to the hotels comes to the city, and unless the rules have changed, that money all stays within the city, doesn't go to the state, the feds, and nobody. It goes to us, and that's it. With a hotel also comes the possibilities of a very good restaurant, not to say that our restaurants aren't good in this town, but a steakhouse-type of a restaurant, a bistro, something along those lines to come with it. The one thing that I am concerned with, and Mr. Mooneyham laid my fierce arrest tonight, thank God, is that the former Devo Mini-Mart, where you come off of the freeway, and that's your first welcome to Atwater is to see an ugly dilapidated building. I'm glad to see that that is finally, from what I understand, going to be rehabbed. God knows why, but it's going to be rehabbed, and somebody is going to occupy that space. So I would only say to the council and to those that will be speaking to the folks that may be bringing this hotel to us, please make sure that you get creative. This is very, very good news for the city. Be creative, defer fees wherever you can, make it as easy as possible for them to come in, and eliminate any hurdles so that we can get something like this here. One begets another, and I think coming off the freeway and having a hotel here... By the way, having a hotel here would get the people that are out there at the firefighting or the reload facility at Castle staying here rather than in Merced, and that's a lot of folks, reload people, CAL FIRE, and air crews. Speaking of which, very quickly, the 16th, we're going to have the V.C. 9 come into Castle at 1:00. However, at 11:00 prior to that, the last DC-10 that's out of Castle is going to also depart and head to Albuquerque. But prior to them departing, they're going to make a pass over the city, and then they are going to come down at around 11:00, right down around the runway right there, and do an 11,600-gallon water drop out there. So anybody that would like to come out and press up against the fence and watch a DC-10 do its thing out there, it's a rare opportunity you're able to see that. Thank you.
Mr. Price.
Can't talk anybody else to come up here. Wayne Wallace, 1653 Van Terrace. I just wanted to kindly give you an update on the newsletter that I'm doing. It has become a monster in itself. It is running, it is up there, and all I have to do is direct traffic. Believe me, chief, I don't know what to say. Atwater has a lot of things going, but I find that all these groups talk to each other at the group, and they think everybody knows about it. And what the city is offering the citizens of Atwater is a place to put things on there of interest that people would like to see. The Historical Society, the Blas House, there's all kinds of things going on all over the place, and believe me, I'd almost need two pages to put everything in there. But I want you to know that I am not a reporter, I am not an editor, I am a collector of facts, and I tend to check them out. And no matter how important it is or unimportant it is, let me know. Because... And all I need is a phone number, really, in most cases. I get burnt sometime by putting things that's not right in there, but, you know, that happens. But I want to thank the citizens for feeding me and giving me the information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. On behalf of the city and on behalf of the council, we want to thank you for your outstanding volunteer job. And I have a hunch that Mrs. Wallace over there is probably a major contributor to the success, so thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak? Seeing none, we will close the public comments. Move on to the next item, which is the Consent Calendar. The Consent Notice to the Public. The background information has been provided on all matters listed under the Consent Calendar, and these items are considered to be routine. All items under the Consent Calendar are normally approved by one motion. If the discussion is requested on any item, that item will be removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action. Councilpersons, is there any person who wishes to pull an item from the Consent Calendar and act on it in separate matters? Seeing none, we will... I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Calendar as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Bergman?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Mooneyham. Any questions on the Consent Calendar or call for the question?
Bergman?
Yes.
Jeff Rivera?
Yes.
Mooneyham?
Yes.
Fall?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, petitions and communications. The first item under that is item number 10, the Valley Christian Chapel. So would the representative from the Valley Christian Chapel please come forward and introduce yourself?
Good evening. My name is Glenn Summerton. I live at 2399 Third Street here in Atwater. I'm here tonight to request the closure of Third Street between Cedar and Broadway for our annual harvest party that we put on. This will be our third one that we've done downtown. We do a hayride for the community, and it just circles around the city block there. So we block off the streets, there's no traffic crossing our paths. They do a trunk-or-treat for the kids also where the road's blocked off at, and we also have hot dogs, nachos that we pass out to all the local kids that come down to it.
And on our agenda, it states on 5:30 to 9:00 on Wednesday, October 31st, that should be Thursday, October 31st. And Councilman Jeff Rivera?
I would like to make a motion to approve request to block off Third Street between Broadway Avenue and Cedar Avenue from 5:30 to 9:30 on October 31st for the Harvest Festival.
Second.
You're seconded by Mr. Bergman. Is there any further questions? Call for the question.
Jeff Rivera?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Mooneyham?
Yes.
Fall?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I want to thank you, Mr. Summerton, and your church for the outstanding job that you have done.
Thank you.
This is your third, and I've heard nothing but wonderful things about this activity, and so thank you very, very much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is item number 11, St. Anthony Immaculate Conception Church. Do we have anybody that's representing that? Just come right up here and introduce yourself, please.
My name is Luz Barrera, 1975, Givest Avenue in Atwater. This year, we are requesting your...
My hearing isn't very good. Can you speak a little closer to the...
Sure. This year, we are asking for your approval of the permission of our procession on the 12th for five years. You guys have approved it every year, so that's our request this year.
Let me ask you this. What's the parade route on this one?
It is on Juniper, starting on Third, towards St. Anthony's.
Okay. That's what I thought. So it starts on Third, and it goes to Juniper, and it goes down Juniper to the church?
Yes.
Okay, that's...
And it will be from 4 to 5.
Right. That is a beautiful parade. Councilman Jeff Rivera?
I was going to ask our police chief if it asked for police department assistance. Will that be any cost to the city?
Not at all.
With that being said, I'd like to approve the request for police department assistance from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, December 12th, 2013.
Oh, five years? Oh, she wants it approved for five years? Is that correct?
Yes, if you have the letter in your hands that was sent, it's a change from last year.
Our motion was for one year.
I think we would like to kind of do it one more year till we kind of review it a little further with our city attorney and everything, if you wouldn't mind, because you have... I know for year to year, you do a wonderful job, and we could kind of put this on the Consent Calendar and kind of an automatic thing, but we just need to do a little bit more studying. But it's one of the neatest parades, and if you haven't seen it before, it tells about the Indian culture and the Hispanic culture, and it is beautiful. Mr. Jeff Rivera, I'm sorry.
I was going to ask our city manager, is there a reason... Is it more beneficial to the city to have a five-year? Because I've never seen this before. Last meeting, we had a five-year, and now this... The whole time I've been here, it's always been one-year, and everything's always been approved as long as the cost wasn't to the city, so is there a city wanting it to be...
I don't see any benefit to go five years. It's totally up to the council. I mean, year at a time. We've never turned this down. We've been doing this for many, many years, and it's a great event, so I don't see a benefit for five years.
The one thing nice about doing it on a yearly basis is that we know what's happening on each year.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so it would be... So that it kind of gives publicity to the public.
Okay.
Any other questions on this? Mr. Petro, city manager Petro?
Don't we guide you to come back too? Are you staying at the church after?
No, it ends at the church.
Okay. So you're not going to come back to Third Street after the Mass?
No.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
So is there any other questions of this... So, Mr. Jeff Rivera, would you repeat your motion, please?
Motion was to approve request for the police department assistance from 4:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, December 12th, 2013, for St. Anthony's Immaculate Conception Church.
Okay. And I'll second that. Oh, seconded Bergman? I'm sorry. I missed it.
It's all right.
That was the first time around you seconded, huh? Then I asked him to repeat it, and then I forgot.
If you'd like to second it a second time, that's fine.
A second, a second time, I'm sorry. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Jeff Rivera. We have a second by Mr. Bergman. And call... Any other discussion? Call for the question.
Bergman?
Yes.
Jeff Rivera?
Yes.
Mooneyham?
Yes.
Fall?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And thank you very much, and thank you really do a beautiful job. Okay, we have the Atwater... Oops. Councilman Mooneyham?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could make a request to the city manager, we have numerous requests such as this each time we meet, and most of the time, there is no cost to the city, but as you know, it's a very fervent belief that we not incur a cost as a city when we do this. Would it be more beneficial to actually call out if there is a cost? Because I've noticed that most of the time, either the cadets or volunteer staff are handling this.
Correct, yeah. If there is a cost, it will be brought up. We can obviously put these in the Consent Calendar, and if there is a cost, we can pull it out and put it on the agenda. It would be easier.
Okay.
And then in the Consent Calendar, if the person representing the group wants to come and explain it, then we can talk about it from the Consent Calendar also.
Yeah.
So if that's in agreement with the group, do we have to do a motion, or can we do a consensus on bringing these items through the Consent?
Staff has been given directions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, call for the question? Or did we already do that?
Yeah, next item.
Next item, and that is our Atwater Elementary School District. Please come up. We have a new person to our community and to the Atwater Elementary District. We have a new person to our community and to the Atwater Elementary District, and she is our new Special Services Director, and please introduce yourself.
Very good. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Nancy Rubel, and I am the Director for Special Programs for the Atwater Elementary School. It is a pleasure to be in front of you this evening to share some of the events that will be coming up with the school district and also ask for approval. We are preparing to kick off our Red Ribbon Week. That is a difficult one to say, say it three times really fast, Red Ribbon Week. We will kick off on October 18th. October 18th is on a Friday, and all of our students will be in red, wearing red for the day, and we will be having a parade that our fourth-grade students will be participating in, and they will be walking... Let me see if I get this right. Again, I am not as familiar with Atwater just yet. Matter of fact, I had to turn around three times to find the city council room, so I do apologize. But the parade will start at Ralston, members will begin at Ralston Park, down Third Street to Broadway Avenue, right on Broadway Avenue to Witten Way, and right on Witten Way to Fur Avenue, right on Fur Avenue, and back to Ralston Park. And so today, I would like for you to approve the road closure on Third Street between Fur and Grove Avenues from 11:15 to 1:00 p.m., and to prepare for some extra trashcans at Ralston Park, because we will also have a barbecue for our fourth-grade students.
You did a very good job on the geography lesson for a first-timer. Mr. Bergman, Councilman Bergman, followed by Councilman Jeff Rivera?
Yeah, same question, no, no cost to provide the service? Absolutely not. And I would like to make the motion to approve the request for assistance with the annual Red Ribbon Week, the activities beginning on October 18th.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, and Mr. Councilman Jeff Rivera, did you have any other comments?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Okay, are there any questions at the council? Call for the question.
Mooneyham?
Yes.
Jeff Rivera?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Fall?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I just want to thank you very much for coming and making the presentation. Welcome to the city of Atwater, and this is a wonderful event. And councilpersons, we are going to have the old-fashioned fire truck, and we have reserved it so that if anybody is around about 11:25, I think we jump on at about that time, and it starts chugging down the road at 11:30, we come out and we have, you will ride the fire wagon. And Councilman Bergman has already been our first volunteer, so he gets to ring the bell, I mean, the siren. With that, again, thank you very much, and hope that it doesn't rain, and we'll see you on Friday.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. And, okay, next item on our agenda is item number 13, City Attorney Report.
Yeah, the staff report is in your packet for the record, and our recommendation is that you authorize staff to issue a request for qualifications for prospective PV that is photovoltaic solar system procurement project for Fire Stations 41 and 42. The RFQ that's in your packet is similar to ones that you've used in the past for projects, and the city has a good track record of pursuing and taking advantage of these opportunities. The packet is in, as I said, is a somewhat streamlined version of one you've used in the past, but it calls for all the relevant information from those that would want to be providers of those systems and work cooperatively with the city on installing them on city property. So, again, this is a kickoff of the process. We are looking for firms that would be interested in partnering with the city on those types of installations at Fire Station 41 and 42, and possibly other city-owned facilities and sites. And so, it is with our recommendation that you proceed with the issuance of the RFQ this evening.
Okay, are there any questions of Mr. Councilman Jeff Rivera of the city attorney?
Does this RFQ allow for both the PPA and purchase of it? Because I know there's grants out there that, for clean energy, that the city would be able to get a grant to purchase it, or does it also leave the door open for power purchase agreement, which the city already has, the water treatment plant?
I believe that it, the latter, I believe it does allow for that, but I'm going to take a note of that question, and if we have to clarify, we can do that.
And can the city also include a couple of the water pumps that the city has inside of itself already, that, to see if we could, I mean, basically, we can go out and fish to see if there's a savings to the city at no cost?
Correct.
So is there any way of adding a couple of water pumps onto this?
Yeah, we would just amend the exhibit.
Yeah, and then maybe you could check with Brian, find out which wells are the most expensive that aren't covered right now?
We will work with staff on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions in regards to this motion or matter? Presentation, thank you. Any other councilmen that have any questions? Are you ready for a motion? Mr. Councilman Bergman, followed by Councilman Jeff Rivera?
I'll move to approve staff's recommendation as presented. Would we, should we add the amendment to add the water pumps as well?
Yeah, and staff has got that direction, so that would be included.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, and then we have a second by, oh, pardon me, Councilman Jeff Rivera. Go ahead, sir.
I second it.
You second it, I missed that, I'm sorry. Do we have any further discussion on this one? Okay, call for the question.
Mooneyham?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Jeff Rivera?
Yes.
Fall?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item, reports and presentations from staff. Item number 14, verbal review of monthly fire department activities and projects. Cal Fire Battalion Chief, Pimentel.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, residents of city of Atwater. Atwater Fire Department, for the month of September, ran a total of 255 calls. One structured fire, seven other fires, five vehicle accidents, 228 medical aides, six hazmat and hazardous conditions calls, eight public service assists, and also, we conducted one public education and 15 business inspections for the month of September. Do you have any questions? I'll be more than happy to answer.
Any questions of, yes, Councilman Mooneyham?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, just a generic question. When you get a hazmat call, what's a typical case look like for something like that?
It could be anything from like a CO monitor going off that they'll go there to check it, which would make it a hazardous condition for the residents. We can, we mark that down. Also, it could be a spill of some type that would go diesel or some kind of hazardous material that was unidentified, so we will arrive at scene and actually kind of try to identify it if we're able to, and if needs be, we would contact the local hazmat team, which is out of Castle. But normally, we don't have to. Usually, it's a minor type of incident that we're able to handle within the fire department ourselves.
If an illegal situation occurred where there was, you know, it was an incident where there was some type of fine involved, are you the fining agency, or is there another agency that would actually do that?
I would believe as far as reimbursing our services, as far as that goes, is that what you're...
That, or if there was some kind of illegal activity that was occurring that would...
Yeah, we could do a cost recovery type deal with the city of Atwater, could do the cost recovery for the resources, and then if it does go to a stint where we use the county's hazmat team, they also do a cost recovery for those resources and the personnel.
Thank you.
Excuse me, but aren't you qualified to do the law enforcement part of it? Or do you call another person to come in if you feel that there's a law that's been broken?
We try, I try to, I can also do law enforcement abilities, but we try to not convolute it too much and get the law enforcement to assist in that part.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Pimentel? Okay, all right. Okay, so, Mr. Pimentel, thank you very much for the good job, and I know this is October, not September, but thank them very much for the Atwater Cleanup Day and their wonderful helping us with our dust. It saved a lot of lungs. Lieutenant Joseph, Atwater Police Department?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is for the month of September. Officers continue working gang and vandalism details. Detectives are working various assault with a deadly weapon investigation, and officers were working traffic details with our traffic unit, our temporary traffic unit. Notable cases for the month, victim claimed to be a passenger of a green Honda Accord and was shot by an unknown driver of a silver Camaro over an area of greensands. That investigation, he was transported to the hospital, that investigation is still ongoing. We also had victims of a, a report of a subject that made it, made inside of a residence with a knife on Drakely Avenue. One of the subjects was assaulted during the incident, and the suspect was, warrant was put out for the suspect. We also had a physical altercation at the Bellevue Bowl involving several males. Several subjects were placed under arrest during the incident. We had 2,116 calls for service, 172 arrests, two rape reports, zero robberies, 22 assaults, five DUI arrests, 10 stolen vehicle reports, and 120 citations for the month.
Okay, any questions of Lieutenant Joseph? Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very, oops, Councilman Jeff Rivera?
I was going to either ask the lieutenant or the chief to give us any more information on our cops grant, but the government shutdown, I know that, put a halt on it, so what is the...
City Manager?
We're completely on hold now. We haven't even got the final paperwork in. We were supposed to do the actual, grab the, get the wet copy October 1st, I was told when I went into Oakland to get the announcement, and we haven't as of yet, Lori, we haven't got anything, and everything's frozen at this point in time, including the website. We can't even get on the website. I mean, we're holding off hiring anybody at this point in time until we can, you know, obviously get, get access to the grant. Now, I was told when I was in Oakland that they're going to backdate it till September. That was with a starting date of October 1st. I'm not sure they're going to be backdating this grant when it finally opens up, so that's where we're at right now. There's no other details that I can, because nobody's talking. I called the cops office, nobody answers the phone, so, you know, they're on vacation.
On the backdating, it won't hurt us because we haven't hired anyone in that position?
Not at all.
Shouldn't penalize us at all?
Nope, not at all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of Lieutenant Joseph? Thank you again, Lieutenant Joseph. Next item is a verbal update regarding our annual city track meet.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. Our track meet is scheduled for April 17th, which is the Thursday. That is the day before Good Friday and the day before the kids are let out for spring break. That has been our annual track meet date now, last two years going on, will be the third day, third year in a row. That's kind of the one that the district has appointed us for the best day for them, working around testing. So, that will be our date for right now going forward. So, does anyone have any questions?
Place will be Atwater High School?
Atwater High School, correct.
And the time will be?
We usually start around 9:00 a.m.
And when do you usually finish?
For, everything's on time, 2:33.
Okay, and what schools are represented?
All the elementary schools, including St. Anthony's.
Do you, do we include McSwain and Newton in that?
No, just the city of Atwater.
Just the city of Atwater.
Correct.
I thought we could be kind of pleasant for once, and, you know, but pardon me, city of Atwater, thank you. Any other questions of this young man? All I can say is, Dan, if this is, this is, you said, your third year?
No, the third year on this date.
Oh, at this date, okay.
Yes.
This is a very complex job, and I commend you each year that you do it, because it is a very complex job, and thank you for doing it.
You're welcome.
And I'm glad you're the one that's doing it, because I tried once.
Thank you.
Okay, next one is a verbal report regarding our trench line collapse on Fur Street. Mr. Acting Public Works Director Shaw?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Yeah, Fur Street, we had that, street was collapsing. Luckily, we had a firm come in to demo a camera system for doing sewer lines. They ran the camera 400 feet down that line. There was nothing wrong. We opened it up, and it was just a compaction problem. Put some road base in it, recompacted it, and paved it, and everything's fine now.
We were lucky.
Yes.
That thing kept sinking, and I thought, oh. Mooneyham?
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, can you give us an update on the portion of Schaefer where there is a dip sign currently just before Manzanita on Schaefer?
The one there by Food for Less?
Correct.
You know, that is an issue. That happened when they put, when they redid the whole road. That's the way they paved it. Eventually, I'd like to try to get that repaired, because it is...
Is that another compaction issue, or is that an actual collapse of a line? Do you know?
No, that's the way, when they redid Schaefer Road, that's, when they did the park, the new curb and gutter right there, that's the way they paved it. That's the way it's been since they paved it.
Yeah, it seems like it's gotten worse over the time since they've done that, but...
Has it, well, we can open it up and see if we can, we can do something about it. I'll put that on the list for...
I would leave that to the city manager.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go ahead and put it on the list, and we'll open it up to see if there is any other issues besides, because it has been getting deeper and deeper.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions of Mr. Shaw? Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you.
Really appreciate all of your efforts. Next item on our agenda is city council matters, and we're going to start with the Councilman Jeff Rivera.
So, I'd like to ask Mr. Chirpstru, because I had a couple planning commissioners ask me about the sign ordinance, and where are we at on the side ordinance? Because I've heard that it's been done for a year, but it hasn't moved towards the city council at all, so I was going to check with you to see what the timeline would look like for it to get to us.
Yeah, I think it probably will be ready for you within probably 30 to 45 days. What we're doing now is going through it just to make sure there's no legal issues. We did get the staff report from when it was brought forward last time. What we've decided we need to do is, rather than just redline, if you will, the existing ordinance, we need to actually recast the ordinance, and it's a fairly lengthy ordinance. My staff was working on it today, we spent some time on it today. I'll give a more comprehensive update to the Planning Commission on Wednesday night with a view towards getting it to the council sometime in the next 30 to 45 days.
Thank you. Then also, I'd like to thank Hunter Farms, was able to take my kids and meet some friends out there with their children at Pumpkin Patch, and it was a really nice activity. It's nice to have a pumpkin patch. I know it's just right outside city limits, but it's nice to have it close to home, instead of having to travel to Planata all the way to Merced. I'd like to thank Atwater High School for including me in the parade, and the Mayor Pro Tem and the mayor for allowing me to represent the city of Atwater at the parade. It was really nice. It was 20-some people in the parade, it turned out really nice. And then finally, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Christopher Columbus State.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Mooneyham?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank the President of the Atwater Chamber of Commerce, Connie Hunter, and also Shauna Wees for their efforts in putting together another successful fall festival. Went by there and spent a little time, and it looks like it's just growing every year, despite some of the tough economic times we've had as a community. It seems...
It seems that the chamber continually steps up and does a fantastic job, so I'd like to thank those people, and also city staff for their efforts in putting the event on. I'd also like to thank our chief building inspector, Mark Pareda. I identified what I thought was an illegal structure in a neighborhood close to me, and he and the code enforcement officer did a wonderful job of investigating that matter and setting them on the right track to get on compliance. So it's good to see those efforts. Also, I'd like to welcome Ramona. I believe she's a new Sun Star representative who will be covering the City of Atwater events. I think I would butcher your last name, is it Guargis? Hey, look at that, all right. But welcome aboard, and as always, any of these people up here are always willing to answer any of your questions. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilman Bergman?
Thank you, Mayor. Not much to report tonight. I also wanted to welcome Ramona to our council. I look forward to many good articles from you. I unfortunately will not be at our next meeting, so one thing that is always of concern to me, I'd like to bring up tonight, just to remember October 31st, Halloween. We've got a lot of young children out on the streets. Just like to ask everybody just to keep aware and keep heads up when you're driving out there. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Bergman, and I, that is so, so true, that the little people and, and are we on daylight saving time, or is it go standard?
The week after, I believe.
Week after, so, so we're?
Fall back.
Yeah, fall back, whatever. Okay. I, I just want to thank everybody for making the Atwater Cleanup Day on October 12th a real success. We, we had a wonderful participation, the community really came out and helped us, and they contributed a lot of e-waste, a lot of tires, a lot of mattresses, and we just can't thank them enough for cleaning out their garages and everything. So thank you so much for that. And we also want to thank Cal Fire for coming out and helping us water down our area where we put the items in the big garbage trucks. It was so sandy, they came out twice and helped us so that we could breathe. And I want to thank the volunteers, the police volunteers, they really helped us out. And the BuHAC football team, they were wonderful, they were our tire people, and our Atwater Police Explorers and Cadets, they did a fantastic job. We hope that our next one will be March 15th, 2014. And so I, we hope that we can do it. I want to tell you one thing about if you have oil, if you have any kind of hazardous waste like that, the city, I mean, the county is putting on a hazardous waste day on October 19th from 8:00 to 12:00, but you have to call the county department and tell them what hazardous waste you're bringing. So, that, that is to, because that was the one thing we couldn't take, was the hazardous waste, so they are having one down on Highway 59. And with that, remember that we have our November 11th, at 4:00, we're having a Veterans Day ceremonies out at our Veterans Park and our memorials, and it will start at 4:00. And so, so please come and we, and remember our veterans and our service people. And we are selling bricks, memorial bricks again, and so please call us, and 357-6205, and we'll sell a brick, a memorial brick for you. And with that, we'll adjourn to October 28th. Thank you.